Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 26. This city council regular meeting is being held telephonically and virtually in compliance with state executive and legislative actions responding to the COVID-19 emergency. Call this meeting to order, and Krista, if you'd like to call the roll place.
Yes, Councilmember Cocal.
Here.
Councilmember Soltis.
Here.
Councilmember Hertahausen.
Present.
Councilmember Simomo.
I'm here.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
I am here.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Krista, and if you could all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for that. Next is approval of agenda. Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
No changes tonight, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Regan. I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Christina and seconded by Jennifer. A call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
On how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye as unanimous to approve the agenda. We do not have any public communication tonight, so we'll go into our first of two public comment periods. Just as a notice, we do have a public hearing coming up later on in the meeting to receive public comment and presentation regarding revenue sources. So if you're speaking about that, you may wait for that public hearing, but otherwise now is the opportunity to speak about anything else, and speakers will state their name, address, or organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff, and comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law RCW 42 dot 178 dot 555 campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in City Hall and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting is prohibited. Looking at the audience, is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the council this evening? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody raise their hand, Phil. You're on mute. Go ahead, Phil.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Outreach Coordinator for a ministry, an organization called Adult and Teen Challenge, and we're based in the city of Renton, but we operate all over the state of Washington. I had a chance to meet Christina at the city of Covington Storehouse Community Resource Fair a couple of months ago, and she told me about this meeting and just said that there's an opportunity for public comment, and so I just want to share a little bit about our organization and what we do. We help those who are struggling with addiction, primarily drug and alcohol addiction, and we say other life-controlling problems. And so if there's anybody that you guys know of that, you know, needs some help as you're interacting out in the community, as you're interacting with others, feel free, we want to be a resource. We've been in existence since 1958 nationally and internationally, and then we also have centers for men, women, and adolescents all over the Pacific Northwest region. We have several centers here locally in our area, and we're the men's center here in Renton. And so we're a 12 to 15 month program. It's a full inpatient, it's a faith-based program, so anybody that's interested comes, they live at our facility for a full year, and they work on their recovery, and everything that we do is through a faith-based approach as far as our curriculum and just how we help them to be successful in life. So they are on a pretty strict schedule throughout the week, which consists of work vocational opportunities, education, counseling, all those types of things. And so I just wanted to come on and, you know, just share a little bit about that. My contact information, I believe Christina has that already, so she can give that to you guys. Our website is www dot teen challenge PNW dot com for Pacific Northwest. And then I will also give Christina our intake phone number, so that if anyone that you guys come in contact with, you feel could utilize our services, feel free to let them know that we're here to be a resource. We have lots of, you know, different events that we do throughout the year, and so I'd love to just keep you guys in the loop with any special events that we're doing, and we just always like to get connected for several opportunities that we feel could be beneficial to our ministry and then also looking for partnerships for how we can help benefit the community.
Great. Thank you, Phil. We really appreciate you coming tonight and giving, sharing that information with us.
Great. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to address council at this time? All right, seeing nobody raise their hand, we will have a second opportunity towards the end of our council meeting. Next up is approval of the consent agenda, which is item C1 through C4. Look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Joe and seconded by Christina to approve the consent agenda of item C1 through C4. Call for roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I also vote aye as unanimous to approve the consent agenda. Thank you. Next is reports of commission. So looking for our arts commission first. Do we have anyone from arts here tonight?
I have promoted Patty.
Thank you, Krista. Welcome, Patty. You were on mute.
Gosh, every time. Thanks for having us. Maria is out this evening, so she asked me to fill in, and we just have a really short update today. We debriefed after our last joint council meeting. We were really pleased with how it went and appreciated all the input that you guys gave us, and we also discussed further plans on our retreat that we have coming up after the first of the year. We're really looking forward to that. We've got some new people in our group, as you're well aware, and they have some, they're so excited and they have so many great ideas coming up that I feel like we've really got some momentum behind us. I'm really, really pleased with how things are going, and we also are finalizing the call for our next round of traffic wraps, and that should be hitting the, we should be publishing the call at the end of this month. And we also discussed the details for the rotating art plan, which we're still working on, and that is about it.
Great. Thank you, Patty. Does anybody have any questions for Patty? Thank you very much, Patty, and please pass our thanks on to entire commission. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next is our Covington Economic Development Council. I do not see Josh or Kalen in the audience. Moving on to equity, cultural, and social justice, Bronwyn, welcome. Welcome, Bronwyn.
Okay, there we go. Hi. I'm just laughing because I was muted. I was blocked. I couldn't see what was happening. Okay, so I am Bronwyn from the ACSJ Commission, and we have had on our agenda for some time doing some projects with our survey, which we are now learning that we need to make some adjustments to that we want to give to the community. There are some, one of our, two of our commissioners are trying to get in touch with actual you guys, the council members, to ask some questions to you about why you created our commission, because we want to use that as part of our agenda to do our actionable items. Coming up, we have, Regan's going to come and help us out with some points that we're needing some assistance, like Robert's rules, because we really need some help with that, and just get us more on the road of our strategic planning. So we're still doing the baby steps, and I just want to say really quick, we invite any and all of you to come and see our meetings, to offer any guidance. We are still working hard, and so anybody who has anything, and of course Superman, Regan's going to come and help us this week, but all of you, please, I don't know how much, how else I can say that we would love to have your input and your participation as, and guidance as we ramp up and are looking toward next year and actually make our faces and our presence known to the community. So that's, that's where we are. Thank you.
Bronwyn, does anybody have any questions for Bronwyn? Beth.
Yeah, hi, Bronwyn. So I'm wondering if, do you think it might be helpful if staff was able to coordinate a workshop between council and the commission together?
That would be so cool. Sorry, just to kind of say it in that terms.
No, that's fine.
That would be amazing. You know, that, you know, Regan is helping us realize that, you know, we, I kind of figured it out when we did the workshop we did that he got us hooked into, and it's like, yeah, we could, because we have people who really want to do a lot, but maybe don't have experience or something to, to kind of see as an example, and then we have a few people who do have experience, but are trying to gently guide when I would prefer that they would be a little bit more forceful about it, but that's just, you know, how it works. So yes, anything and everything would be much appreciated, because we, we want to succeed, and I'm really hoping that the council is with us with that, and so any tool that you can provide for us to set us up for success is much appreciated.
Okay. Thanks. I know that's something we'd have to discuss and.
Sure, sure.
But.
But I love the idea.
Okay. Cool. Thanks.
Thanks, Beth. Jennifer?
As much as I appreciate Beth's suggestion, having served on a couple of these commissions, I would be hesitant, because I feel like the, your commission may feel that council's offering guidance and/or oversight, and as volunteer commissioners, we want to give you the independence and the freedom to have an open thought and open dialogue amongst each other and bring issues to us that we may not be aware of, that we may not even be comfortable hearing, quite honestly, and that's okay. That's, that's the role of the commission, is to broaden our skill set, to broaden our vision, and I fear that if we're there doing a workshop with you, you're taking notes of everything we're saying and enacting that. So that would be my personal individual concern, not as, you know, council consensus here, but I hear you. I remember being on arts and feeling that kind of same way, but at the same time, I get it. And the idea is for us not to be telling you what to do.
Right, and that is something that I think that Regan and we, and the, me and the co-chair, the vice chair discussed, and we, we understand that, but we also, you know, as far as issues and things that we see in Covington, we have what Regan knows that we, we, tongue-in-cheek, we call it group therapy. We've talked about those things, the, the hard stuff, right? And now, yeah, we do have some guidance, but for the council and things that we like to tell the council, but one thing we don't know is how to do it. You know, what is the proper steps to take? Some of it that you might think of is kind of basic knowledge of how the process works, working within a municipality, those kind of things, and that's where I feel I am lacking, because it's been a long time since I've worked in the community, and then we've got some people who are chomping at the bit, who've never done it, and so that's the kind of guidance that I would love to see, even if you can point us to a pamphlet or something.
And his staff are, are there for you, and if you're feeling stuck in that regard, you know, Regan is an open door, and so you can definitely talk to him about that, because even as council members, I know we ask, hey, what's the correct way to add this to the agenda? How can we, you know, add this and bring in the attorney and, you know, guide us in the correct way? So honestly, that kind of support council would not be nearly as helpful as Regan and his team.
Duly noted. Yeah, well, we've got Regan now, so we're gonna utilize that resource until he can, and now he's, you know, can't get away from us due to surgery, so we've got that on lock.
All right. Thank you, Bronwyn, very much. Really appreciate the updates, and please pass on to all of the, your fellow commission members for all the great work, and I know you're going through drinking through a fire hose and learning all the new ropes and everything, so we really appreciate all the news and updates that you bring us, so thank you.
Yes, thank you for having us. Have, have a great evening, everyone. Thank you very much.
You as well. Thank you. Next is human services, Debbie Jacobson. Welcome, Debbie.
Hi there. Okay, I'm on.
Yep.
Punching all the buttons. I am actually an easier, lighthearted month. We had Matt from the Parks Department and Ms. Amesa from the Prose Consulting come, and they did a presentation and talked to us about that they're working on a plan, a larger, long-term plan, and soliciting feedback from us and getting some general ideas and just had a conversation about some of those ideas, and then we all committed to help fill out the survey to contribute to that. We talked about some of the history, this Covington City Park, I worked on that 25 years ago, for years, and it was mothballed for a while, the economies and stuff over time, and eventually happened, and eventually my grandkids are going to get a play on it, and so it's kind of neat to be on the other side of this now, looking for the next generation, the next group, and what that looks like in the town. So there were just a lot of really creative ideas, you know, just giving, just a few of the ideas that they had talked about. Same conversation we've had in the past about connecting the trails to create that mobility. It's always been a conversation, the power line area had come up again. Then things, a lot of the ideas revolved around seniors, activities and locations and places that seniors can go and be safe and do different activities outside of the other things that are established for them, and a lot around teenagers, but not just things for them to do, like skateboarding parks, which is really what our focus was in the, in the past of what we were able to do, but things that really help with academic support, that we have some areas that, you know, we could provide that in an environment that is kind of outdoors and expose them to different things, have a lot more exposure to nature, because we have this beautiful environment here that incorporates. A lot of kids aren't out in it, you know, so providing programs, people have found that when they actually provide these opportunities, people show up, and it's surprising, you know, you think it's just going to be people's little kids, but it's not. It's, it's a, it's a range of people. And then we're talking about lots of benches for seniors, encouraging environments that seniors can, people that have, you know, that have a hard time getting around for long stretches, some days that's me, and but ability to stop and sit down and more frequently and take more advantage of the things that are also already here. So, and also another big one is covered areas that allow for classes, like similar to what we have at the city park now, but areas that are really well lit, that no matter what the season, you know, the gray, if it's, that it's well-covered, so that you're not getting wet a good portion of the time, and that is lit well, so it feels good when you're in the space and allows more activities to happen regardless of the weather, but it's still outdoors. So anyway, that's just some of the ideas they had. Everybody was so thoughtful and, and it was really neat to hear people that had children actively, you know, going to the parks and in the schools and stuff versus somebody like me is thinking more about my grandkids going to the park and what will I do with them, and then how do we live our lives now without kids in the house? So it's a good, good, well-rounded feedback from everybody. The other thing we went over is just preparing our agenda for the joint meeting with the council. That's coming up on November 9th, and mostly discussing the accomplishments from 2021, which has been a very unique and interesting year to overcome and, you know, find ways to still feel like your work's meaningful. And then our plans for 2022 and what we're looking to, to do, all things going where we're hoped they're going to go. And then we also discussed allocating staff donations to the Human Services Fund and went over some ideas of how we might do that. So it was, it was a good, good meeting.
Great. Thank you, Debbie. Does anybody have any questions for Debbie? No, well, Debbie, thank you very much, and please pass on our thanks to all the commission members for all the hard work that you guys are doing with the human services and reaching out to help everybody in the community.
Certainly will. Thank you very much, y'all. Take care.
You bet. Have a great evening.
You too. Bye-bye.
Next is Parks and Rec, Laura Morrissey.
Hi, I'm back. Thank you for a great joint meeting. I'll go through our agenda backwards, because the last item on our agenda for our meeting last week was to plan for the joint meeting with you, which I'm delighted with. I'm grateful to have had a conversation. It's always fun when ideas get rolling and we can talk together about ways to make the parks in the city great. So thank you for being willing to listen to us and converse with us. We also heard in our meeting from the consultant who is working on the Prose Plan for the city. He'll be coming to every meeting for the rest of the year and doing a public hearing on the Prose Plan at our Parks Commission meeting in December. This meeting, he shared a lot of the data that he has gathered, and it was very interesting, as somebody who's been involved in the previous Prose Plan and now involved in this one, to see the continuity between data, and I mentioned that just briefly in our joint meeting, how trails continue to be something very highly valued by the community, that, that was like top request in our previous Prose Plan, and the data coming in shows that that still is something the community very highly values. This Prose Plan, I know Matt has really tried to take the tack and with the consultant of focusing on not just what the community wants, but how can we get there? Okay, so if we can't build a massive, wonderful trail network within the next six years, what steps can we take to move in the right direction? He felt that was something kind of missing in our previous Prose Plan, and I'm, I'm very excited about that philosophy and that idea and that focus to take steps to move forward in the direction that we want to go. So anyway, that was kind of interesting to hear, just the continuity of data, the philosophy behind the Prose Plan. I'm hopeful and optimistic that when you see it, you will be very pleased, and it will be a document that we can work with, not just be like, okay, check done, and we'll put that on the shelf for another six years. The first agenda item on our meeting was to hear from Jesse, Maintenance Supervisor. He talked about parks maintenance. I just have to give my compliments to Jesse and his team. They are amazing and wonderful. He spent, he talked about how much time they have spent catching up from COVID, because when everything was shut down, I didn't even think about this, but they were shut down right in the middle of the growing season. So all of that time that they would have spent cutting things back, making sure the blackberries didn't take over the benches at CCP, they were not working, and so now when they come back, they have to deal with that and fight back and regain ground that has been taken over by plant material. So they have really just done a great job working with a small team. And one thing that I really appreciate as a community member was the pride that Jesse says that they take in their work. Jesse, Nate, and the other two names are escaping me, but the three, two and a half who work in parks, he talks about how they see it as their park, and I just appreciate that as somebody who lives in Covington, because when you value something as your own, you take care of it. You take pride in the work that you do. You put in a little bit of an extra effort that a contractor wouldn't put in, and so I just compliment them on their work. They are doing a lot, and, you know, they gave us all the data and the breakdowns and the mowing and, you know, all sorts of stuff. But it all sums up as they are doing an amazing job with the time and the resources that they have. And so it's good for us to be able to say thank you to them and to support them in the massive work that they do to keep our park system looking the best that it can be with the resources that we have. So that is my update.
Thank you, Laura. Does anybody have any questions for Laura? Well, thank you, Laura. It was a great joint session we had earlier today, and again, please pass our thanks on to everybody on the commission for all the hard work you do.
Will do. Thank you.
Laura. Next is Planning Commission, Jonathan.
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome, Jonathan.
I hope everybody's enjoying the wonderful, wonderful and lustrous fall weather we're having. First, I'd like to start with apology. I conferred with Ryan last month, and we determined that no report is necessary, because we hadn't met, but somehow that message didn't make it up to you guys, and I apologize for that. Some kind of miscommunication, and I'm going to own it. I don't know what happened, but let's just blame me. Second, I will say that we have not actually had a chance to meet this month yet. Our next planned meeting is November, I believe, the 4th. Let me double-check that date. And we will be, our annual agenda item calls for electing a new chairman, so you may not get to see my smiling face anymore. You may get the far more handsome Murray Williams in a, in a more regular basis, and regardless, we're looking forward to working with our new commissioner, who was appointed just at the end of August, and we haven't had a chance to really meet her and work with her too much yet, but we're looking forward to it. That's pretty much everything I have. Okay. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions for Jonathan? Well, thank you, Jonathan. So it looks, sounds like you're going to be getting back into it very heavily in November, so thank you and pass on our thanks to everybody in the Planning Commission for everything they do.
Have a great evening, everyone.
You too, Jonathan. Thank you. Next up is Youth Council, Amelia. Welcome.
Okay. Hi, guys. I'm Amelia. I'm the chair on the council, so I'll just go over what we've been working on lately. So at our last meeting, we welcomed two new members, Freddie and Michelle, and they're, they're really cool. They're fun to work with, so I think it's going to be a nice addition, because we've been filling up a lot of the open spots that we have, so that's pretty good. Um, we spoke with the LIAC member, LIAC is the Legislative Youth Area Council, so that's up at Olympia. We spoke with one of, we spoke with her, and she talked about how she is looking forward to potentially partnering with us in the future and working with us on projects and us working with them on projects, so that'll be a fun little, like, collaboration. Then we went over our November, November service project at the storehouse, and so we plan to help put together Thanksgiving, like, little food baskets, per se, that, so it'll be like a good, fun experience for us all to, like, kind of like, work with each other, because we have, like, our meetings or whatever, but it'll be nice, a good opportunity for us to actually, like, collaborate and stuff. And then we discussed the holiday drive-throughs, drive-through celebration, and how we plan on having a booth there where we will, people can, like, the, some of the kids can turn in letters to Santa, and then from then, from there, we're going to, write them back as Santa, so that'll be, that'll be really cool. That'll be fun for us to all work together, and then for our new members, they went over the OPMA training, and that was basically it. Yeah.
Thank you, Amelia. Does anybody have any questions for Amelia? All right, seeing nobody. Thank you, Amelia. Great presentation and update tonight. Really appreciate it, and please pass on our thanks Alright, seeing nobody, um, thank you, Amelia. Great presentation and update tonight. Really appreciate it and please pass on our thanks to. Everybody on the Youth Council for all that you're doing and looking forward to some more reports. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys for having me.
Have a great evening.
You too.
Right, next up is New Business Item Number One, which is a public hearing. Tonight, we have a public hearing to receive testimony from the public regarding. A, the two thousand and twenty-two revenue sources and possible increase in property tax revenues, this being the date set and proper notices having been posted and published. In accordance with state and local law, the public hearing is hereby declared open. And Casey, I believe, is providing the staff report for this item.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Um, so tonight's public hearing um is required under RCW eighty-four fifty-five one two zero and this is one of our three public hearings that we'll have for the budget this year. And this one, like you mentioned, will focus on our revenues as well as potential increases in property taxes. And just to mention on the, for the property taxes, we're required to set our property tax levy by November thirtieth of each year. So I'm gonna share my screen and start talking about the revenue sources for you. Let's see. Alright, can you see everything okay? Okay, so I'm not gonna go over all of the revenue sources that are included in your handout. I'm gonna go over the uh the major ones um for each fund. And then if you have other questions, I'm more than happy to answer any of the other revenues that are in here. Or we'll also probably be going over them a little bit more in depth at the Budget Workshop this weekend as well. Um, so for the general funds, uh, we have our, our main categories, our property taxes, sales taxes and utility taxes. Those are our three major revenues for the general fund. And for property taxes, um, our, what's currently in the budget is uh as past practice has been uh the one percent property tax increase. And for the levy this year, our levy is uh three million ninety-nine thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars. Our assessed value is uh three mil, three billion, excuse me, six hundred and fifty-two million, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand three hundred and seventeen. And then we also add some um funds in there for new construction and our new construction this year is ninety-two million. And that's really increased uh a lot over the um, the last several years. This is a really big new construction number for us. So our total assessed value from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two has increased eighteen point six percent. And um I've got a couple of graphs here and I'm just gonna walk through our total taxable assessed value. And our property tax rates. And this is a kind of a helpful illustration when we get into the property tax portion of the presentation, but. You notice how the assessed values as they go up, our property tax levy rate goes down. So it's kind of um what I would consider maybe a teeter totter effect as our assessed values go up, our property tax levy rates go down. That's how it works for property taxes. Um, for sales taxes, um, our sales taxes have been doing wonderful. We're breaking records, bringing in more than we ever have. Um, our unrestricted sales tax revenue for two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, we're estimating five point four million dollars. It's a little bit of a decrease over our two thousand and twenty-one estimated actuals. And we're being a little bit of, a little bit conservative with our projections for next year. As well as some of the things that are just plain unknowns right now, such as the. Uh, vaccination verifications that are taking place in some of our um sit-down restaurants right now. I'm just uh. Ratcheting that back a little bit to see how that's gonna affect our retail sales for food services. For restricted sales taxes, um, we've got two restricted sales taxes. Those are our HP fourteen oh six and our HP fifteen nine ninety. And they're coming in right about six hundred and ninety-one thousand. Again, the HP fourteen oh six we're currently using for low income, low income rent relief with um buying Maple Place. And then our HB fifteen ninety, we currently have not allocated that. And you can see our tax rate is the eight point seven percent that increased with the um HB fifteen ninety of a. Point percent there. Just a little bit of um graphic here for you on what our actuals have been over the, the past years as well as what we're currently forecasting. And uh you can see how we've really been ratcheting up two thousand and nineteen. There was a little bit of a dip. But then twenty twenty even with the pandemic, we really have seen some growth. For utility taxes, um, we have several different utility taxes, electricity, natural gas, solid waste, cable and telephones, storm drainage and cell phones. Um, for solid waste, cable and storm drainage, they are all at eight percent while all the rest are at six percent. And generally, my utility taxes stay relatively flat. They've stayed relatively flat over the last several years. Not a lot of growth in those. Um, we're seeing potentially maybe a little bit of dip with folks going back to work. Um, and just not having the power on the, the heat on, things like that. I might see just a tiny bit of a dip for next year. And then um just for the street fund, a major revenue source there is the transportation benefit vehicle fee. Um, we're projecting three hundred and eighty thousand dollars next year and that's um. With the twenty dollar vehicle license fee currently in place. And um for the Development Services Fund and. Building permits and licenses are a big uh revenue source there. Their uh building permits are based on a hundred and eleven new single-family permits. For next year, uh, as well as anticipated commercial fees and land use uh revenues, that's seven hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars projected in just the building permit category. They also have another category for their plan review fees. Uh, that's another major revenue source for them. Here's just a little permit. You can kind of see their permit um issued over the years. Uh, two thousand and twenty-one is just year-to-date and so I anticipate that that will be coming in higher than two thousand and twenty. And then another major revenue source for the street fund is our motor vehicle fuel tax. Uh, for next year, we're anticipating four hundred and twelve thousand five hundred and fifty. This is another one that remains relatively flat. We saw a little bit of a dip last year when folks were home and we weren't. Seeing a lot of those fuel sales, but it started to come back up a little bit. And then one new revenue source I wanted to mention is the ARPA funds and we'll be doing a presentation later on in the meeting on that, but. We currently have two point nine million dollars worth of ARPA funds that are, that have been received. They were received in June and um. Those funds are gonna be incorporated, incorporated into the Budget Workshop and we'll be determining how to allocate those funds. We'll be speaking about that next, next weekend, actually. And then here is the, the land use inspection and engineering fees for Development Services Fund. This is the other side of the permits. Uh, this is the plan review fees and things of that nature. For two thousand and twenty-two, we're anticipating um over almost one point eight million dollars coming in for the Development Services Fund for those fees. And then lastly, for the swim fund, this is our last major operating fund. Our two thousand and twenty-two budget is estimated to come in at three point two million. And those are our levies that are assessed with the drainage utility fee in this uh surface water fund and then those are assessed on the property tax bills that our residents pay. And that's all I have on the revenue sources. And then next for the property taxes. Um, so as pack, past practice, we always include the one percent that were allowed by state law. And we start with, um, are you able to see actually my property tax? Or do I need to reshare?
Nope, we can see it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Um, so we always start with our two thousand and twenty-one levy amount, so our current year levy amount. And then we add our one percent property tax. So for this, our coming up year, that would be adding um twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and three dollars. And then we add our new construction. And basically, those are the only increases that we're allowed to have. We're only allowed to have the one percent plus the new construction. And so next year's property tax levy will be three million ninety-nine thousand two hundred and fourteen. And then, as I mentioned before, our assessed value, um, three point six billion currently. And our estimated levy rate is point eight four eight six zero. And again, as I mentioned, as our assessed value goes up, our levy rate goes down. And I just have a graphic showing here just kind of how it would affect, um. And believe it or not, are the home value that's showing there, the five ninety-two eight seventy-nine is, was our average. Uh, home sales uh over the last quarter. So I used that number, kind of give you an idea. Of what the tax amount would be based on the two thousand and twenty-one home value amount and the assessed value growth. And then the new value amount for the new home value. And that is all I have on property taxes. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions or anything council has.
We'll go to questions after we're done with the uh public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. The ground rules for public comment during the public hearing are as follows. When your name is called, step up. Give your name, state whether you're a resident of the city of Covington. Please limit your comments to four minutes. The city clerk will set a timer that will go off when your time is up. When the timer goes off, please wind up promptly. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address counsel during this public hearing? Please raise your hand. Anybody in the audience wishing to address counsel during this public hearing? Seeing nobody raise their hand, I will declare this public hearing closed and. Counsel, do you have any questions? Jennifer?
Hi Casey, thank you as always for very thorough information and breaking it down for us so that we can clearly understand. But I just wanted to confirm um based on your, that last sheet, just so it's crystal clear to me. Um, that it would roughly be for the average homeowner that has way more expensive house than I live in, but. Um, a close to six hundred thousand dollar house, that it would be about a twenty dollar increase per year, so about a dollar sixty-ish per month. Is that correct?
So this is where it kind of gets a little bit complicated. So the city is allowed to set the levy amount and that's that three million ninety-nine thousand that we receive. And we're only allowed to do the one percent increase. That's like seeing it from the city's point of view, but as the resident's point of view. If all houses within the city. Increased the same assessed value amount of like the eighteen point four percent, like across the board, if everybody's assessed value went up that same amount. Then they would technically only see a one percent increase. Where it gets complicated is if your house went down. Twenty percent in assessed value and Beth's house went up forty percent in assessed value. Then that levy, the total levy amount, that three million dollars gets spread to the residents based on their assessed value. They, it is super complicated.
So, so Beth would be feeling more of it than I would.
Exactly.
My hometown. Okay.
Exactly. So the, the assessed value only determines a home share of the levy. So like I said, if all home values were to change by the same percentage. Then each home share of the levy would stay the same and everyone's taxes would increase by exactly one percent. And so it's, it's gonna be, it really is based on each individual resident's home value. And what proportional share they are of the assessed value.
Of the, of the pool.
Of the total.
Yeah, so the uh. Roughly a dollar, you know, sixty-five or a dollar seventy is gonna be the average amount. Some are gonna be paying, some are gonna be paying.
Yes.
More based on the assessed value. Perfect. That's why I asked. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Jennifer. Beth?
Yeah, just a, just a quick question then Casey. Um, does, does the King County Assessor's Office give you all? Give us statistics on how many homes went up and how many homes went down and how many homes stayed the same? Do we have any of that information just for a?
They give me a total, they give me the total roll. So they give me, I can get a download of. All, all taxable parcels within the city. Um, and I, I could back into that. I could do that. I could do those calculations to see like what's gone up and what's gone down for folks. They don't provide it. A pretty summary for me, but I could request a download that they could give me of all the parcels.
Okay, alright.
Makes sense.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Beth. Any other questions? Alright, thank you. This is just a discussion item tonight and it will be coming back for another public hearing in November. Am I correct, Casey?
Correct.
Okay, and then we'll make a decision at that time. So thank you very much, Casey. Appreciate the present.
Thank you.
Brings us to New Business Item Number Two, which is Council Appointments to Regional Forums. So looking at Agenda Item Number Two. We um, you have a spreadsheet there in Attachment One showing who our current members are for two thousand and twenty-one and our alternate. Um. So Metropolitan, I'll just go down the line. Um, Metropolitan Solid Waste Management Advisory Committee. The reason we're doing this now is so we can let um Sound Cities know who our representatives will be when we move. So that they have them in November for next year. Um, we have Shelley as our alternate and Dawn as our member. Does any council members want to join the? Metropolitan Solid Waste Management Advisory Committee? Um, Dawn, are you still able to be the um? Member?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Um, moving on to Skateboard. Um, currently, we have Jared as our member and Bob as our alternate. Um, does anyone want to be two thousand and twenty-two member? Jared, you wanna continue that or is there somebody else that wants to take that on?
I, I can certainly continue, but if someone else wants the opportunity to uh sit on the board, I'm definitely open to that as well.
Alright, so Jared, I have you as the member. And I'm sure Bob will stay as the alternate. Thanks, Regan. Um, Sound Cities uh Public Issues Committee have Joe as the member and Christina as the alternate. Um, Joe, do you wish to continue being the member?
I, I would like to stay on with as a member for pick.
Okay, Christina, do you wanna stay on as alternate? Or do you want to?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. Uh, Ryra nine for um Jennifer, have you as the member now and then Sean and Christina as alternates? Jennifer, do you wanna stay on as the member?
Yes, I would love to.
Okay, and then um for alternate, Sean, Christina, both of you, either one of you or somebody else. Sean is good, okay?
Are you waiting for me? I think I'm going to suggest a different one for me, so if I could do that one, that would be wonderful.
Okay, so we'll do Jennifer's member and Sean as alternate.
Perfect.
Then Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority, Sean, have you as the uh member staying on as that? Okay? And then Skip? Uh, right now, we currently have Joe as member and Christina as alternate. Joe, are you staying on or?
I would like to, I would like to stay on.
Okay.
I don't mind the alternate is good.
Okay. And then the other items on here for, there's four other ones, Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board. Um, GMPB, the Transportation Policy Board and GMPC, those you need to apply. Through SCA to get on those and um if you're interested in that. Um, work through Krista or go right to um Leah's. Email that came out from SCA if you're interested in getting on one of those. And those go through pick and then the board to decide those. Okay. Beth?
Yeah, just a quick question. Um. Would it be helpful to know if there's anyone on our council that is thinking about applying through SCA just so that we? Know. I know some, uh, some of the other cities and mayors have been doing that so that folks within the council know who's going. To apply for which ones, not to say they would get it, but. Does it help to do, go through and do that for us so that we know?
Yeah, on these four items, um. I'm applying for PSRC Executive Board again. I, is anybody applying for Growth Management Policy Board?
I was thinking of doing that, yes.
Okay, make sure you apply through SCA. Um. Transportation Policy Board?
I'm always interested in transportation uh policy things, so I was thinking, I was thinking of it. I haven't made up my mind yet though.
Okay. And then Growth Management Planning Council, GMPC.
Uh, I'm. Interested.
Okay, so just for those four boards, um, I've already applied for PSRC. Uh, so if you're interested in those, make sure you get your application in. Through SCA and let Krista know that you're applying as well, so she has record of it.
If I could mention Jeff, if council members, if you need help with that, with the applications medal, just let us know.
Okay, thanks, Regan. Alright, so. Then with that. I'd look for a motion of the list of council members that I named off for Ms. Mack, Skateboard, Pick, Ryra nine. Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority and Skip.
Second?
It's been moved by Jennifer, seconded by Christina. Call for roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
John, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alright, and I vote aye. It is unanimous for that list. And Krista, did you get the names as I read them down the list?
I think I have them. Thank you.
Okay. Before I move on, I just want to say thank you. That all of you are involved in one of these committees regionally. And that is nice because we have not always been that way. So thank you all for stepping up and to make Covington known even more in the region. Next is new business item number three, review the proposed 2022 legislative priorities and policies, Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's amazing that we're back here again, getting ready for a neck, another legislative session. I've been working with Holly, Brianna, speaking with our legislators, evaluating the, the temperature and the, the mo. The mood between legislators and, and what's happening this coming session. And with that, we put together. Some proposed priorities and policy documents that I'll share with you tonight. And then at our next council meeting, we'll plan to bring it back for adoption after hearing any thoughts that the council has. Just by way of reminder, this is an, an off-year session, so it's the short session. It'll be a 60-day session. It's an off-budget year. There will probably be some biennial budget amendments, but we, you'll notice we do have a capital. Funding request and that's because the state received money for ARPA-eligible capital projects. And so we're going to try to, to get into that. So I did send the priorities to everybody yesterday, the priority and policy document. The first one is Highway 18. This is something, you know, we've been working on to widen Highway 18 from Isquahobart Road all the way to the I-90 interchange. And make that safer and, and help traffic flow better. The legislature has made investments in this to advance the project to construction-ready status. Which is something we're grateful we've been able to work for the last several years. However, the construction for that project still remains unfunded. There are discussions going on right now about a potential transportation revenue package. And so we are in the mix in those conversations to ensure that Highway 18 and then State Route 516 that I'll talk about in just a second. Is included in that revenue package. So as I mentioned, State Route 516 is our next one. We've done it kind of piecemeal a little bit of a time and right now with a transportation revenue package on the horizon. We thought, let's put in our full request to get that road completely widened all the way out to our eastern borders. That's a thirty-eight, there's a thirty-point-eight million dollar project that we have included right now in the revenue package. And we'll continue to push for that and advocate on the city's behalf for that. The next item under transportation funding is to really. Support legislation that provides cities with the funding tools that we need to better meet local needs. The legislature funded a committee a couple of years ago. That, and they came up with over a billion dollars of unmet local transportation needs. And so there's transportation legislation. Kind of feels like it's being left in the dust a little bit. The legislature's created revenue for other options for look. In, in housing and, and other things. And so this is something we're hoping for if we talk about services. And affordable housing, transportation's an essential element of that as well. So that's a, a general statement we'll be supporting. Or proposing as well. And then on to our capital funding request, we looked at several different items. We wanted one that would be a win for our legislators if it's funded. Something that next year during their election, they could say, look, we, we got this done. So we have some projects underway right now, a water quality project, which is ARPA-eligible. And it's requesting just over $300,000 to complete a water quality project in Pipe Lake. It helps environmental, it helps the habitat and for swimming. And this is some, the, the last one that we need to, to put into this lake. And so it's kind of the. We feel we'll have better success if we can be the last money in with this ask as opposed to the first money in. And so that's, that's why we came up with this project, why it rose to the top. And then criminal justice reform. As you know, there was large sweeping criminal justice reform in the last legislative session. And there's been some ambiguity about its applicability throughout jurisdictions in the state. Things like Terry stops. Can, can you legally now with the new police reforms, stop someone based off of? Of probable or reasonable suspicion, or do you need probable cause? Different jurisdictions are applying that differently. And so our ask in this is for them to revisit criminal justice reform. And help alleviate and fix some of the unintended consequences of that by providing greater clarification. And implementation direction. And so that's the hope that we'll get from the legislature. There's. Standing firm that they will not alter the reforms that they made, but they are open to providing clarification. So that's, that's a request that many cities are going to be asking for. And then the last one is for local control. We've seen the last few years, more and more local control. Has been taken away, especially in local land use authority. And, and so that's something that AWC and other cities are supportive of. And something that we felt should be a priority in, in our legislative agenda. As we hope to maintain local authority that cities have historically maintained and been able to provide for. So before I go on to our policy document, is any questions on the priority document? Sean?
Yeah, not so much a question as just a statement. I think those, you know. Priorities that you're working on, I, I think are spot on. I can't think of anything to add to that. I made some notes at the back. But yeah, no, I, I think that's a good list to start with. Oh, I wrote something else down. If I think of it, I'll, I'll, I'll pipe up again. Thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I will go ahead and quickly review our policy document. As you know, each year we have a priority document that we put together. And that's where we spend really the lion's share of our time lobbying for. But we know there's other issues coming up in the background and things are happening. And so, and so we keep an eye on these things that are in our policy document. We keep an eye on, on if a bill gets dropped or, or there's a hearing or something so that we can be aware of. And jump on it if we need to be. So I'll just go not read through everything, but just kind of the topics there that I sent out to you. The first is state shared revenues to preserve and enhance state shared revenues. Something that, that funds that should be going to local jurisdictions do as opposed to the, the state sucking those up. Property tax, support lifting the 1% property tax ceiling. To allow city revenues to increase with inflation and increasing costs. That's something that's, that's crippled a lot of jurisdictions in the state of Washington. And then covert funding, we talked about mandates. We do have a mandate to replace culverts. And so we're asking for funding and grant options that should, that be made available for that. And they've provided some, but in a much increase is needed in that regard. The next one are regional transportation needs, like State Route 169, obviously State Route 516. And, and others to focus on those and, and help promote the regional transportation needs as well as our own. On unfunded mandates, we're opposing obviously unfunded mandates that on, on local governments. OPMA proposals that provide cities with greater flexibility on how to hold virtual meetings. It's likely that, that that will happen. And then infrastructure funding and also affordable housing and homeownership tools, really. Requesting funding tools for affordable housing in municipalities as opposed to, to asserting our local land use authority. Give us the tools that we need to do the work that, that you want done, which is provide affordable housing. So that we can do that in each city. And then of course parks to increase the level of investment and grant opportunities that are available for parks. Within municipalities. And then of course our statement at the end, which is that we'll support SCA. And Association of Washington City's legislative agendas. Any questions on our policy document, which isn't that, it's a little bit changed from last year, but not too unfamiliar? Okay, well with no quite, oh, yeah, go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. I'm curious for the covert funding, how much are we short? What do we estimate on that?
Well, for us, you mean just in the city or statewide? Statewide, it's in the billions. In the city. Dawn, you could help me here. I think we're at, is it 5.6 or 6 million for the 156 covert? And then we have one or two others?
Yeah, there, it, it's, it's all in that order. You know, there's aspects of, of some different projects that contribute to that. Though we don't have the exact numbers, but yeah, we're talking about that type of scale, the five to seven million.
Yeah.
And if we are showing good faith and working toward replacing those, are we in compliance with the, the judge's order? Or what, what, if we can't get the money, what, what happens?
That's a very good question. At, at this point, it's, it's just try to work for it. And that's something we've done is. As you recall, we had a covert failure on 156. And so we're able to, to put in, replace it with a covert as a temporary fix. But we just have to continue to apply for funds and that's what we've been consistently doing since that.
Okay. And then I, I just appreciate the. Affordable housing, homeownership tools and combining that with, you know, allowing or promoting. Or advocating for local input and, and influence over that. But definitely, I think the. We could be lending our voice to seeing the state kick in more funding for affordable housing, so.
I agree. And Beth, was that all, Sean?
Yeah, that's it.
Beth?
Yeah, just a quick question. I, I may have missed this in the last year. So the, the city of Covington, Covington supporting lifting the 1% property tax ceiling, when? When was that? Put in motion?
When did we include it in our policy document?
Correct.
I'd have to go back a couple of years, but I think it's been in there for a little bit, a couple of years. I'd have to check for sure.
Okay, thanks.
Jeff, do you, do you recall on that one for sure? I, I don't remember exactly when the council put that in there.
I think council put it in there about four years ago to start asking. And I don't think Olympia actually started looking at it until about two years ago.
That, that sounds about right. I know, I know AWC's pushes this every year. You know, it's, it's, it's an ongoing. It's an ongoing lobbying effort.
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay, you're, you don't need anything from us tonight, Regan, or do you?
No, nothing tonight. If, if, if what I'm thinking, the council is okay with the language and how we have this. Then we'll put it together, then make it look pretty and then bring it back for adoption at the next council meeting. Once council's adopted it, then we'll start meeting with our legislators prior to the 2022 session and get moving.
Sounds good. Once we get it done, can we send, share it with SCA as well?
Yeah, Krista has that flag to do.
Okay. Thank you, Regan.
Thank you.
Next up is new business item number four, presentation of the Aquatic Recreation Center feasibility study. Matthew. I believe you're doing that or is Ethan doing that?
I think Matthew is gonna introduce this item. I think we just have to get him.
Oh, there he is.
Analyst.
Thanks, Ethan. Welcome, Matthew.
My pleasure, Mayor. Thank you very much for having me and counsel. I've been with you tonight and just all the more appreciative of the time you put into thinking about our future in Covington. We're gonna touch on a lot of things you've been dealing with just tonight. And I don't want to take away time from the presentation. What I really wanted to say is I'm admiring how much time and effort you put into this. I'll quickly, before introducing our consultant team, say that you have already had some history with our feasibility study. And I thought it might be good to remind the council that this first came up as a legislative initiative to study the idea of a recreation center. In our market area on behalf of the citizens, not so much as a city project, but as a potential idea of how to meet recreational needs in our area. Particularly knowing that the Covington Aquatic Center has a limited lifetime and that we have already determined in 2018. That we need a replacement. So you saw a grant come through and gratefully, the city of Covington was in position to administer that grant. And that was towards the end of 2019, Washington State Department of Commerce dollars came to the city. And that same year, we went ahead and began a search for a qualified team to take us through the feasibility study. Has, has awarded by the state that we should study our needs and how could we feasibly meet them? Going into 2020, then we have a contract established with the best qualified team. You're going to hear from one of their main proponents and principals, Ruston Hall. The team lead is the ALSC Architects Team. And council accepted that contract in March, set us in motion to begin the feasibility study with, with the most qualified team. And you'll hear a little bit more about that. By the summer of 2020, we were putting together, we had done a situational assessment. I'm not going over the details, except that council stepped up, heard the results, the feasibility study. And asked, and appointed two members of your council to join a steering committee. So Christina Costelstis and Jeff Wagner, both of you stepped forward and joined a citizen steering committee. As a way to keep a connection to the city council, but to also recognize a citizen initiative in our area. And a citizen-driven idea about what is our needs and how do we meet them recreationally? You'll hear more from the consultant about the process. I just wanted to say that that feasibility steering committee. Set the stage. I appreciate their time too. They've given you some of their feedback along the way. But they told us from the onset that they were future-focused. That was the first letter and acronym they actually put together to spell out feasibility and we won't go over each one. But they had that future focus. They also had the idea of bringing communities together. So not thinking of just a city, but thinking of a community and particularly partnering with the city of Maple Valley. And they said, well, let's have lively discussion and let's look at trade-offs and let's look at what's ultimately feasible. So it's been an exciting process to have their steering committee meetings and public hearings and workshops, not hearings yet. We've had two public workshops, four steering committee meetings. And to see the results of having gone through a community with expertise of our consulting team to present to you the feasibility study on that. So what I wanted to say was thank you because you've put time in, you've invested in this, you've let the city take lead in terms of running a contract. And administrating something on behalf of the larger community. We are excited to go with you, council and the councils of Maple Valley to decide on next steps. Cause we, we still have the ability to go further, certainly with the idea of designing the center. That might fit our community that we have found to be, we'll hear more about as what might be a feasible option for us to evaluate. It's a gratitude for the investment for that future focus. And that's what I wanted to say. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm gonna turn it over to Ruston Hall unless, Mayor, you have questions.
Go for it. You're on mute, Ruston.
Let me start over. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you very much. It's always an honor to get to present. Especially something that's as meaningful as as this feasibility study. I will echo everything that that Matthew said. So many hands on this, and that's what it takes to get something like this started. And certainly to maintain that momentum. If it's okay, I'd like to share my screen to put the slide deck in front of you. Is everyone seeing my screen? Okay. Fantastic. Well, it's been since early two thousand twenty that I came before you initially. A few things have happened in the world since then that lots of those events put a bit of a damper on our ability to make some progress. We actually put the project on hold for just a bit to let things sort of settle in. And and then we just kept going and in working with the steering committee. Got some excellent feedback, lots of questions. And a lot of desire to keep digging for good information, and we we did. We added more time to the schedule and more effort to make sure that. Everyone had an equal inclusive opportunity to have a voice in this process. And that will share some of those statistics with you. What I want to start with here, and I'll get through this as quickly as I can. You've got a long agenda tonight. The feasibility study is essentially in most simplest terms, we need to stick a stake in the ground and test an idea. This is by no means a final, final document in terms of what you ought to build, what things might cost, where it might need to go. What we need to do is get enough information gathered to then thoroughly test that to answer the fundamental question, is this project feasible? And we went through all of those tasks. Made all those those right steps and made lots of assumptions, all which are documented in the final report. And the good news is, yes, it's it's feasible and in a couple of different versions, and we'll explain that in just a moment. But I'm just ecstatic for you. I've done so many of these types of facilities. I know. The impact something like this can have on a community. And I'm all about making sure this does not stop with the approval of a feasibility study. This is not the end. This is just the very, very beginning of a of a long process with an amazing result here. And we will talk about two different feasibility options as we go through this. Okay. First of all, again, on acknowledgements, I want to personally thank Mayor Wagner and Councilmember Soltes. From this council, thank you. I mean, personally, it takes that level of commitment to make something like this happen. The core planning group has been absolutely amazing in their level of commitment to this. And the expectation at a very high bar on what this study needed to entail, how it was gone about and what those results were. It's been an absolute pleasure working with every one of you, and I I hope you're pleased with the results that we were able to garner from this. And then just over here on the right hand side, just all the consultants, members of my team that worked. Over the course of the last year and a half to put this together for you. So the methodology of the study. There was a lot of research and a lot of interest, again, from the steering committee and from the team and core planning. What do people really want? What's that that public perception of what a a new aquatic facility and a new recreation center? Looks and feels like, what does it include? What what do we need to be talking about? We've literally made thousands of contacts. We've had people that have been engaged in so many different methods. A statistically accurate phone survey is where we really started, and that's that's significant because that statistically tells you. In talking with two hundred people within about a seven percent accuracy rate, really what the entire community would say. And those results were then tested through situational survey assessments, interviews, public workshops. Tons of of focus group conversations and interviews with with individuals, business leaders, city staff. For steering committee presentations. And at the end of the day, what we found was that statistically valid information was really pretty good. We adjusted a few things here and there along the way, but again, for the purposes of the feasibility study, that was the basis for it. That does not mean that won't change over time. Perceptions change. As soon as people see the results of this, all of a sudden, they may become much more engaged. And say, hey, I I have an idea, and as leaders in your community, you always have the ability to say. From from a leadership standpoint, we want to steer this just a little bit this way or just a little bit that way for the good of the community. So this is by no means final, and I think it's a very, very good test and based on really good process and good information. So this is a very, very simplified diagram of this this entire process. And again, it reemphasizes the point that this feasibility study really is just represented as the start. And yes, it's completed with your approval, but that's just the beginning, and it's so important to figure out what those next steps are. This takes you through funding and capital campaigning, designing and so on. We're going to talk at the end of this presentation about what specific next steps are that have come from this process. We've learned a lot more since we did this very simplified process document. And that is really starting to inform. There's multiple tasks that can really run. In parallel with each other to keep this moving. One of the tasks that we took on then was also site considerations. We wanted to look at sites in both cities and immediately surrounding areas. That's a huge part of feasibility, whatever this thing might be. And once you have an idea from that that survey work and those conversations. About what that scope of work starts to look like. Where were you? Where would you put it? Do you have sites available? Some cities really struggle with that if they're small and highly urbanized. The good news was, we immediately found through working with C B R E fourteen different sites that we could take a look at. That were at least plausible as a potential location. What we did is set an initial really basic outline and a criteria list. To see where these different properties might fit into that. Is it big enough? Is it accessible enough and so on? Once we started to get a feel for that, we met with the steering committee, we established a a weighted criteria site analysis spreadsheet. Before we really drilled into the the final sites that we looked at, we wanted to do that ahead of time. Because we wanted to kind of keep the the subjectivity out of it as best we could. Best thing you can do is have an objective worksheet to score. Based on all these different criteria that are then weighted, you know, each relative to the next. To be able to score these sites and have some idea of which ones start to kind of rise to the top. So we did that. Here's the different locations, generally speaking, of where those sites were. We narrowed it down and ultimately took it down to three. And those sites are located, site A is in Covington. That's actually the one ended up from our analysis scoring the highest. But as soon as I say that, I can easily say that the second one, site F, which is over in Maple Valley. Was very, very close second to that within a third site C, generally between the two. And the good news is, these are all viable sites. There are more viable sites than this. Real estate is, as you know. It can be a little bit fickle and and things change, things move. It may not end up being at any of these sites as we move forward, but the good news is there are sites available and probably more over time. That'll be one of those next steps is identifying where that the project ought to be. Catch up on my notes here. All right. The next thing we started looking at was funding for the project, which is always a. It's fascinating combination of art and science in this case, and how you might come about the funds that might be needed. On this particular document, the gray dot identifies potential sources of funding for capital and for operations for the facility. Because both are critically important. The blue dots would be just really capital funding sources only. And the idea here is to really shake the trees and figure out any potential funding sources. Again, this is not a final list, but it gives us a pretty good idea of where that funding might come from. Partnerships, absolutely essential. That's that's potential for some in kind contribution. Anything we can do to to relieve what a tax burden might be on the citizens. Because ultimately, there's probably going to have to be a tax component to this. We'll get to that here in a second. But what can we do to make sure we've offset that as best we can from other sources of investment? And in grants and things, partnerships being one of those. Fundraise fundraising is another. We brought in Campbell and Company, Kate Roosevelt. Her specialty is is raising funds from the private sector. She helped us identify what some of those. Public grant sources might be as well, but she really looked into foundation gifts and grants, naming rights, sponsorships. It's it's a little bit of art in in that sense, the the swing that we found on this one, it could be anywhere from two to five million dollars. Well, that's great. That's money that does not have to come out of taxpayers' coffers, so. Really shook the trees hard on where those things are. All of the details of all this obviously are in the report. We also then looked at how you would publicly fund this and what what different tax initiatives might be out there. In terms of cities, in terms of special districts. And what we came up with in looking at all this and working with Eco Northwest and their expertise. Parks and Rec Service Area Metropolitan Park District, Public Facilities District, looked at all three of those. And looked at what other municipalities have done in of the twenty-three Metropolitan Park Districts in the state of Washington. Nine of them have been specifically for aquatics facilities. And of all of these, that one was deemed by Eco Northwest to really be probably the most suitable. That idea has to be tested. It's just looking at how these things fundamentally work, how they're approved, how they're funded, how they're managed. That was their recommendation. And also, obviously, the Washington State Legislative Funding and any federal funding that might be available. So when talking about that recommendation on on pursuing the idea of a Metropolitan Park District. This is a kind of an interesting map. It's showing you two different things. The absolute outer boundary is showing what the boundary is as identified by Ballard King on our team for a secondary market area. This area over here that's in gray is focused primarily on on Kenton, on Auburn. And we're thinking at this moment, if you were to set up a boundary for an M P D, you would probably not include those municipalities. Because they probably have their own taxing structures in place already. They would be basically a a non resident user of a facility like this. The darker green area in the middle here is the primary market area. And it's also another potential M P D boundary. So we really looked at two boundaries, again, one being. Everything in red, including the green. The second option being just the green. We also added on here, the sites that I showed you earlier, those white dots indicate generally where those sites are. And we wanted to show that those are all really good choices and are also very, very central to this service area, which is really critical. When you look at travel distance and access and the ability and interest for people to invest in traveling to a facility like this. So when we break down scenario one and scenario two. That scenario one, again, is that whole big area. Eco Northwest started doing some analysis of if you set a metropolitan park district with that outer boundary. What could that fund? What would that levy rate look like? And this is a summary of that first scenario, that larger area levy rate of about forty-three cents. That could raise an issueable and issuable debt of about a hundred and fifteen million dollars. And based on a median home value of four hundred and fifty-five, that median annual tax amount would be one hundred ninety-six or three dollars seventy-seven cents a month. Scenario two is just the boundaries of Covington and Maple Valley. Just it's a much smaller area. You see, as was discussed earlier, it's there's kind of an inverse proportion there that levy rate is going to go up. Because you have fewer people contributing to that. And that issuable debt then drops as well. So what we wanted to look at was if those are two potential. Outcomes from Metropolitan Park District test. That's two different funding amounts. So that really says there's two different scopes of work we need to look at and different costs for those things. So we've done that. Another thing I would point out here is we're looking at the business planning that Ballard King did on this, and there is an element of. Operation cost and revenue. There is going to be a delta there. Those deltas are shown here at. Seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand annually, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand annually. I'll get more into that detail in just a moment. But what this also starts to show you is scenario two is smaller, and I'll show you that plan and that scope in a minute. What it totally plays out in this and what Ballard King has pointed out to us is. Each individual municipality cannot, it's not feasible for you Covington alone to try to take this project on. It's there's just not enough capacity to do that. Maple Valley by themselves, same thing. As soon as you pair up. And and work in a in a interlocal type of arrangement, it's very, very feasible and can expand over time. So this is part of the business plan. That was another task that was done, and it was it's exhaustive. It's looking at all the costs. All the revenue potential and really studying what what those deltas are. We've got under operating expenses that option one. We've got an operating expense annually of about four point seven million. It's it's a little bit bigger facility than option two, which has an operating expense annually of four million. The revenue side for option one, the bigger one is about four million. Option two, about three point two. So these high charts down below start to indicate that. That recovery rate for option one is eighty-four percent. That should put a smile on your face because many of these facilities do not hit that recovery rate level. A lot of existing facilities are at fifty percent or or sixty percent, so eighty-four. Eighty in the second one, which we're calling the phase building plan or option two. Those are fantastic recovery rates. So that's a that's a wonderful outcome. Just based on all the assumptions and all the information that's gone into that that business plan. Economic benefit and project benefit. Did a study on this as well. There are some direct and some indirect impacts here that are that are very positive. The direct impacts. There's immediately new jobs in in the community. There's some temporary jobs building facility. Those are all put put money back into the community. And citizens pockets. The more important part is really the indirect, and it's it's much harder to to calculate or to to monetize, especially when we don't know exactly what site. This might go to. But you know, it's pretty obvious, anything that's immediately adjacent to a facility like this, when you're going to be bringing literally thousands of people a day. To a site, there's definite positive economic impact to what might be an underused facility or something that's. Struggling to to maintain business. This definitely helps that. It helps the community. Your 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 mantra of growing towards greatness, this is all about that. When you look at the. Recreation, National Recreation and Parks Association, and there there are three pillars of community, health, wellness, equity. Conservation, all of these things are are supported by a facility like this. Your pros plan from two thousand and sixteen is this is very much in alignment with the findings that we pulled out of that report as well. So huge economic impact in a very positive way. This is what causes people to come to a community. This is what causes people to stay in a community. We did some conceptual layouts of the building just to start the conversation again. The building plan is dependent on the site, and until the site is finalized, you really can't do final building design. But we wanted to get a sense of how these spaces could work together. This is showing three very large multipurpose court spaces, admin lobby space, locker rooms in the center, community space. A large aquatics facility, lots of exterior opportunities for supporting those interior spaces with with breakout spaces and so on. Level one, excuse me, option one and option two are broken out here. Just to give you a sense of how much the impact would be on that smaller M P D, that smaller tax base to to fund something like this. The basically the smaller scope. You can see we go from three gymnasiums down to one. We call this the phased approach because it doesn't mean you're you'll never have it. It just means that will be a future phase. The building can easily be designed to expand in the future. Everything we always do is a phase one. And with thoughts towards how we can economically in the future expand the building. But you can see down here below in comparing one. But you can see down here below in comparing one to the next. Less multipurpose, a little bit less on the aquatic side and a little tighter on the the community spaces in the center there. And then a reduction as well on that second level. We had on this one, large running track, some support spaces for that fitness area. Again, don't get too hung up on this. This is just based on assumptions and putting a scope together that we could study and then give people something they can react to. So finally, the next steps, we spent a lot of time with core planning. We spent time with the steering committee really thinking hard about. How can we make sure the pulse doesn't stop with the feasibility study being completed? How do we maintain momentum? This is just the start. And what we we see and what we're what warms our hearts is how excited the steering committee was about this. And and members of council and really thinking hard about how can we get people engaged and involved in this? This needs to be a grassroots community supported idea. So that by the time a vote might come around, everyone is very well informed and and understands what's in it for them. As they're casting their ballot. So form a community advocacy group. That's a high, high priority now. Do it now that this is the perfect time to just continue the goodwill that started with this. Get the results out for people to react to. Don't sell it as well. This is what we're going to do because it isn't. I guarantee you it will change. It will grow. It will get better as more and more people get on board. This detailed geocoded survey, that is all specifically geared towards testing the idea of a taxing district, a Metropolitan Park District. You've got to get some notion of will people support that level of funding? That that's a huge portion of either one of those options, the larger or the the phase one. So getting a handle on what people want and what they're willing to to pay for is really pretty critical. The capital campaign, that's that the softer side of funding. That's the 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 private side, the donations, grants and things. That takes planning that takes a couple of years. Quite honestly, all of the steps for that type of a campaign are all outlined in pretty good detail in the report. We need a foundation five oh one C three that will handle and receive that money. And keep that that all of that transparency that's required for that and separation. Determine a final site. That's that's a really easy thing to say. That's a job to do. We've identified some great ones. We identified them almost a year ago. So it's time now to go ahead and resurrect that study. Choose one and that will help people understand and know what what to support. Engage in the community. That's that's hopefully, as we start to be able to gather again, that's what we've been missing so desperately in this study and this process is. Being with people because that's what this whole community center is about is bringing people together. But finding opportunities to continue to engage the community in this, educate them. And help them understand the benefits and and the value proposition literally of a of a facility like this. Relationships with potential partners, absolutely. We've already given you a pretty good list of the interviews that have been done, continuing that conversation and showing them this is the result of this, getting them excited. And again, what's what's in it for them and and the value of such a partnership. Metropolitan Park District, as we talked about. And then once that site selected, it's you can start doing some design work. You can start really understanding. Based on this type of funding or this type of funding, these levels, we can start putting some meat on the bones here and really get people excited. Not just with some of the the early images, but some actual images based on on the site and the constraints and the opportunities that those sites offer. So so I am at the end of my presentation. I'm happy to address any questions that anyone might have.
Counsel, have any questions? Beth?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I do have a question. On the recovery rate, you made the comment that most facilities recover about fifty percent of their expenses. Through revenues. So what is the X factor or secret sauce that's going to allow this facility to recover eighty to eighty five percent? What are the assumptions?
Yeah, the it really comes down to the 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 revenue side. The costs are are they are what they are based on the the types of facilities, the the rates that you've got for utilities and so on. So that's that's the easy side to calculate. The the revenue side is the is the variable. And based on the the research that Ballard King did. They made educated assumptions on what they felt that they could charge residents, non residents to use the facility. And I would definitely encourage that that to be, you know, continually assessed and and tested. We do think that's a a viable level that is included in the report. But that's that's where that recovery is coming from. And we part of it's also just the rate of usage. The the expectation that we have based on the 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 research that was done on and the conversations that we've had on. Who's most likely to use a facility like this? The usage rates were very high. So it's between those two things.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Great presentation, Ruston. Really appreciate it.
My pleasure. Thank you all so much.
Matthew, any other presentations or do we need to go into the appointing to council members?
Thank you, Mayor. That's what I was going to ask you to consider doing to help us advance. We are talking about having a working group between the two cities. And yes, if the council is prepared, I just thought it was worthy of suggest of letting you know that we're asking you tonight to accept this study. And at this moment in time, it does include advancing site A known and known as a Covington Town Center site for further design work. You heard like, well, you've got to make that decision. That is not a final decision, but endorsing this study does endorse site A so that we might be able to advance more on design and work with a working group. As the mayor was just referencing of both cities, staff and council members. So please know what's in front of you is to accept this study. It does include accepting the town center site for further design. And then I was setting up a working group that two council members might join. Thank you.
So do you need a motion or consensus for this? Because I don't see a motion in the blue sheets.
Right, it would just be a consensus, Mayor.
Okay.
And certainly note that your involvement in stimulus solstice has been appreciated and it might continue.
So do we have council consensus to approve this feasibility study with site A as the? Most likely site moving forward, knowing that it may change? Just a thumbs up from everybody that approves of the feasibility study? Okay, I see six. So I see six consensus on the feasibility study. So and then. Pointing to council members, I'll ask Christine if she wants to consider staying on. Well, actually, what would this time constraint be? Are you talking monthly, bi monthly?
Yeah, thanks for asking that, Mayor. It would be an investment right now up and through the end of the year, probably meeting twice. And then really only as needed. So I would suggest it would probably meet twice a year, but we just have to get two in probably before the New Year.
Christina, did you want to still stay on this?
I would love to.
Okay, I'm going to step off because I've got a lot of other time constraints. So is there another council member who would like to? I mean, I can stay on it if there's nobody else that wants to.
I would.
Jennifer?
Schedule, but I was on pre pack and this is totally what our dream was. It's great to see it.
Okay. Did you have a question, Beth?
No, I was going to offer up to be on it. That's was my reason for raising hand. Sorry, I didn't jump in.
Okay.
To learn more about it and and become more connected to the project.
Okay, so. Who would like to do it? Christina wants to do it and then Jennifer or Beth?
I mean, I like the idea of having different folks that are on it that haven't been part of the process, so but.
That's what I'm.
Yeah.
I was just going to have ask Christina stay on it for continuity, but.
For sure, for sure.
Well, my thought process is, you know, to to get it almost taken off and then to hop off the wagon would just be very disheartening.
Sure, no, I think if if one one person that has that is a legacy participant is still on it and then somebody that's new would be probably a smart choice. Get that perspective.
Okay.
We have to limit it to two?
Yes, it's one staff person and two council members. That'll be what it'll be from Maple Valley also. Ethan?
Yeah, I just thought I might maybe add just a little bit of clarification on what this working group might do. It it would be simply. A mechanism to try to put together a proposal of what to do next that could then be brought back to both city councils. So it's not as though this won't return back to the full city councils. It's just we recognize that with two separate city councils, it's a little bit difficult to try to move things forward. In a fashion that where it brings everybody forward together. So I I do think that the working group is really to develop a proposal that would then come back for consideration from the full council. So the idea is to keep really the full councils connected as this moves forward as well, so.
So you guys, I don't want to say duke it out, but which Beth or Jennifer, who would you?
I mean, I guess I. I am. A planner and land use is something that I'm interested in. So to see what this might look like would be. Important to me as far as, you know, what would that proposal potentially look like to start moving forward and it doesn't tend to to continue with the study, so.
And Jennifer, you said you've been on the pros plan in the past and done work with the parks.
The pre pack, yeah, Parks and Rec Priority Advisory Committee. And our recommendation was to create an MPD and to join regionally with cities to make a community center a top priority for the city. And that was, I don't know, four or five years ago, so it's pretty exciting. But if Beth really wants to do it, that's fine. I'm just totally excited to see it actually. Making this substantial progress, getting a consultant on board was a smart move.
Okay. You fine with that, Beth?
Yeah, that would be great if I could do that. That would be fantastic.
I don't know how much land uses in this, but it's designing and working with fundraising and revenue streams. So, okay. Thank you, Jennifer. Thanks, Beth and Christina. So Christina and Beth moving forward for this. And then I'm sure internally you guys will decide who the staff person is. All right, thank you all very much. Matthew and Ruston, thank you very much for the presentation tonight.
Pleasure.
Next up is new business item number five, discussion of American Rescue Plan Act. Casey and Regan.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Casey and I have a presentation that she'll kick it off and then I'll I'll finish it off. And so we'll go that way. So go ahead, Case.
Thanks. So the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law earlier this year. It's a one point nine trillion economic stimulus bill. And a hundred and thirty billion of that was allocated to local governments, of course, and we got our share. So I'm gonna start with a PowerPoint presentation here. Give me a moment, let me share my screen. Okay. And you can see my screen correctly? Okay, so the American Rescue Plan Act, Covington is entitled to receive five point nine million dollars. And the funds are going to come to us in what they're called two tranches. That's kind of a funny word is two distributions. So as a non entitlement unit, which is what the city of Covington is considered partially, yes.
Sorry for interrupting you, but I don't think you're in presenter mode for your.
Oh, I'm not, okay. Let me stop sharing and go back. I've never done a PowerPoint this way, so bear with me. Is that still the same?
No, that you got it now.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so like I was mentioning, we'll we'll be receiving two distributions. As a non entitlement unit, we're going to receive our distribution straight from the state and not from the US Treasury. We've already received our first half distribution. We received it in June. We received a little over two point nine million dollars. So these funds can be used to cover costs that are incurred beginning back to March third, when the bill was signed. They have to be obligated by the end of twenty twenty four and spent by twenty twenty six. So for example, if we have an infrastructure project in process, as long as it's in process obligated under contract. We can continue to spend those funds until the twenty twenty six deadline. So eligible expenditures, the type of things that we can cover is we can support public health responses. We can address negative economic impacts, replace public sector revenue losses. We can provide premium pay for essential workers. And we can do some infrastructure such as water and sewer and broadband. And for us, the water and sewer category also includes a surface water management infrastructure. So for supporting the public health response, I won't go into all of these, but these are just some of the categories that we're able to support. So we can provide support services and programs to contain and mitigate the spread of COVID nineteen, including, just for some examples, we could provide vaccination project programs. PPE purchases, you know, when we're purchasing our masks and gloves and cleaners and things like that for City Hall, the Aquatic Center Maintenance Staff, things like that. We can also do public communication. There's just a lot of different things that we can provide in the public health response category. Again, this list here is not exhaustive. This is just an example of some of the things that we could do. Again, again, another category for supporting public health responses is a big category they're addressing is behavioral healthcare needs. Anything that's been exacerbated by the pandemic, including like mental health treatment, substance abuse, any other behavioral health services. If we had a provider that performs some of those services, we could have them as a sub recipient, allocate some of those funds to them. We can also do some payroll and covered benefit expenses. So for us, particularly for the city, we could anybody that would be performing COVID related work. Anybody that would be monitoring sub recipient contracts. If we give money to our human services providers, we can recoup any of those administrative costs, things like that. So the other category, addressing negative economic impacts. This is a relatively large category, but some of the things that we can do is we can deliver assistance to workers and families. We can do things like household aid, providing money to the food banks, providing housing assistance, rental assistance. We can support small businesses, kind of like we did with the CARES Act funding. We could do a similar program again if we chose to. We can also speed the recovery for tourism, travel and hospitality sectors. Not that we necessarily have a lot of that within the city. We could get maybe somewhat creative with promoting events to draw folks into our city. That would be something that would be eligible. And then rebuilding public sector capacity. And what this category is, it's basically getting us back up to pre pandemic levels. So let's say for for example, we had twenty aquatic staff that were hired during the or that was our level pre pandemic. And now we're down to ten. We could use those funds for advertising and outreach and things like that to try to get those folks back up to their their pre pandemic levels. So replacing public sector revenue losses. So recipients can use the loss revenue funds for the basically, they call it the provision of governmental services. So this is a really broad category and this is this is our most flexible category. We can anything that's considered a governmental service. So we could take our revenue loss calculation, which we'll show you later on, but it's about one point nine million dollars. We could use it to offset our public safety contract. We could use it to do cybersecurity upgrades. There's some pay as you go infrastructure and maintenance things we could do. It's a really broad category and there's a lot of stuff that we could we could do in. It's a really broad category and there's a lot of stuff that we could, we could do in that category. Premium pay. So premium pay is monies that we could give to, let's say, grocery stores, health services, things like that. We could go up to $13 per hour above their salary. A maximum not to exceed 25,000 per eligible worker. These would be grants to small businesses that we could do that would allow them to maintain, retain their current staffing. Water and sewer infrastructure. So for us, this would include stormwater. And Regan had already mentioned one of the stormwater projects that was ARPA-eligible that we were hoping to get paid through via the state. And this is kind of that same pot of money. So we have several swim projects that would qualify for this. And again, we just have to have the cost obligated by the, by the end of 2024 and spend those through 2026. Broadband, I won't go into this too detailed, but this is just another category. It's not something probably the city would pursue, but I just wanted you to have the information available to you since it was one of the categories. So there's just some ineligible uses. Again, I won't go into all of them, but there's just several things that we can't do. We can't fund our pension program with this. We can't put deposits into our rating day funds. We can't pay debt service, those type of things. None of those have been earmarked as potential uses anyway, so we are safe on those. And recruitment. So of course, there's a recruitment section. And it just basically says that, you know, if we don't spend these funds correctly, we are we could possibly have to pay those funds back to the Treasury. And I will mention just, just right off the bat, these rules are not final yet. This, these are all based on our interim rules. The reporting was supposed to be, our first reporting was supposed to be due at the end of October. And the final rules were supposed to be given to us in September. They just pushed the first reporting out until April of 2022. So not exactly sure what that means for when we'll get those final rules. But so this is all subject to somewhat probably some changes. But some of the things that we know we probably will spend the funds on are less gray areas and more more they're more reasonable that we know that those rules are probably going to stay in place. All right, Regan, I'll pass it off to you for the guiding principles. Just let me know when you want me to change the slide.
Thank you, Casey. So a couple of guiding principles to make sure that we focus on as the councils deliberating on how to allocate ARPA funds are, one, just remember the temporary nature of it. It's one-time money. And therefore financially, fiscal responsibility would say it should be used on one-time expenses. And so what we've put together and we'll share with council are some one-time expenses that we could use these funds on. And then others, other opportunities with ARPA are partnering with other jurisdictions or other agencies that are working within the region and have other gaps that need to be filled and are doing the same work that the council wants to do. We've not yet identified for sure what other agencies are doing, like Casey said. These are, we still don't have the final rules yet on on these. And so it's an interesting path moving forward here, but we've not, not assessed partnerships real well here other than with some of our human services agencies and utility districts, but I'll, I'll go through those. And then one thing that this has allowed for is given us time. So we have until December of 2024 to, to commit these funds. And so that's a, that's a good thing. So we've got time to think about it and make sure we're making the right investments. Next slide, Case. So we did a pretty extensive needs assessment with all of the agencies that are human services commissioned funds and also with our two utility districts. And basically asked them what needs in Covington are there and what financial amount could help fill the gap for, for those needs. And so with our human services, it came out to $515,000 that, that is needed for expenses that would be authorized under ARPA. And about $312,000 for our utility districts. We also did the same kind of survey and work internally throughout the departments to assess what could be, what, what ARPA-eligible projects or, or one-time expenses do we need as a city? And revenue losses like Casey mentioned, we're able to calculate those at about 1.9 million for 2020. Small business grants, we thought if the council wanted to do another phase of small business grants, we could put another 150,000 there for IT needs to build up our IT infrastructure with more virtual and remote working. That's 289,000. And then swim infrastructure, stormwater maintenance. There's projects just over 2.5 million that these funds could be used for. So that's total that we've identified through our work so far, just over 5.7 million. As Casey's mentioned, we have received 2.9 and are anticipating 2.9 next year. So we should be at, at just, at right, just over 5.9 million total. So the needs assessment we did brings us a couple hundred thousand below what we're anticipating receiving. Want to go to the next slide? So again, speaking about the outreach that we've done, we went to all the human service providers, utility districts. We did create an ARPA webpage on the city's webpage as well, so people could go there and, and see the needs and, and see what ARPA is about and how it will be funded. We have developed a resident survey that we'll do. These are all part of the requirements and we'll push that out through social media. And we'll also be having public hearings. Some of those can be couched within the public hearings like we had tonight for our budget. But we'll also want to do one or two separate public hearings for just ARPA. And I believe there's one more slide, Casey. Ah, right. So Treasury resources. This is just for you, council, and the public's information. If you go to the Treasury website, they've got the interim final rule that we're working off of right now, fact sheets, frequently asked questions, a lot of information that you or the public may be interested as we progress through ARPA. And I believe that's the end of the slideshow and I want to thank Casey and her finance team and the, and other people in the city for all the work they've done to compile our needs assessment that we were able to present to you tonight. We're happy to address any questions you have now, but we do have this on our agenda to work on allocating these funds at our budget workshop this Saturday. What we're hoping to get from the council is not necessarily, you know, this X amount of dollars going to this agency and X to this, but really kind of buckets, you know, we'll, we'll fill this bucket with this much ARPA funds, this bucket. And maybe that's revenue loss, maybe one's human service, maybe one's small business grants. And tell us how much you want to allocate to those and then we'll go, go make it work. But we can talk more about that on Saturday. So at this point, any questions or comments from council?
Yeah, it's pretty exciting, you know, that we have these funds. This is, this is great. I'm looking forward to our conversation on Saturday to talk about it. Is there anything we should be thinking about between now and then? I mean, I like those categories you, you got. And you did mention about putting into buckets. Is there anything else criteria? You did mention these are one-time funds, so we won't get them ongoing. Okay, so something that possibly don't want to fund something that needs continual funding to keep it going. So, okay.
Right, like, you know, we wouldn't want to use this to, oh, sorry.
No, go, no, go ahead. I just thought something else.
Yeah, just the one-time funding. And I would say just to be thinking about, and that's a great question, Sean. What, what buckets do you want to put, allocate funds into? And, and I, the ones we propose are human services fundings, past utility bills due to COVID, revenue losses for the city due to COVID, small business grants, IT infrastructure and swim infrastructure.
And am I correct in assuming we have to spend this in the next two years, the, the biennium? We can't carry it over for five years to fund something?
The, the funds need to be allocated by December 2024 and I think.
Okay, you might have said that. Yeah, okay.
I think spent by December 2026.
Okay, so we have a little bit of time. Okay, great. Thank you.
Christina.
I just also agree that this is very exciting and I saw the IT bucket. And considering everything that's happened in the last couple of years, I'm just hoping we're getting the finest IT equipment for our entire team.
Mason's pretty excited.
I would be too. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. All right, seeing nobody else raise their hand. Thank you, Casey and Regan for that presentation. Look forward to having a very lengthy discussion on this on Saturday. That brings us to new business item number six is to discuss the Republic Services request to extend and decrease the recycle processing charge. I am going to recuse myself and leave the meeting and turn this over to Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we'll wait for Jeff there. Okay, I think he's gone now. So who am I turning this over to? Don? Is that who it's going to?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Smith and Council. So tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about our solid waste contract, more so the the rates that would be going into effect next year. There's a little bit of history in the, the blue sheet there, but basically there's three aspects, two of which are part of the existing contract. And one of them is what we would need action from council to continue. So September 30th, we received requests from Republic Services regarding their rate changes, one of those being the annual CPI increase, the tipping fee increase from King County Solid Waste. And so two of those are the, those are the two that are, are in the contract as, as far as being allowed. And then the last piece is they were saying that a decrease in the actual recycling processing charge. So if recall, we put that into effect over the last couple of years. And they're basically saying it's, it's not enough that it can go away. So they're still asking for a recycling processing charge, but they're saying that it can go down. So, so basically the CPI increase was 6.29%. The tipping fee is a result of the tipping fee increase from King County Solid Waste. So basically their rates went up, so they're allowed to pass that through. That's a 9.37% increase. Keep in mind, that's partly the large increase there is partly because they did not increase fees, a tipping fee increase for, for this last year. And then as for the recycling processing charge, that would be a decrease. It would go, the residential rate would decrease from 1.77 to our dollar and 77 cents to a dollar 10 per residential customer per month. And the multifamily would decrease from $5.63 to $3.52 per cubic yard for the multifamily and commercial customers. So that's the piece, the recycling processing charge needs council approval to continue. It's only been approved through 2021. We staff does recommend extending the date until December 31st of 2022. Before the end of that, we would have Republic Services come back again to provide an update regarding the recycling commodity for that next rate adjustment. So we put some, in the blue sheet, there's some monthly breakdowns for based on carc size to give you kind of an idea of what the overall with the increases in CPI and the reduction in in the recycling processing charge. So, so that's in there. So I don't need to add any more information unless you guys have questions. So happy to answer anything if you have anything.
Jennifer.
Thank you. Just a quick question. Do we know why the processing charge has gone down? What is the driver for that?
Yeah, a little bit of it. Some of it's just the commodity value has kind of come back. The majority of like the paper and stuff is still struggling, but some of the other commodities is my understanding. I don't remember exactly what those were. I do know that some of those pieces has kind of come back, but I knew specifically that the paper still hasn't really come back and that's one of the, the largest pieces.
Okay, thank you.
And if I understand it, tonight, we just have a motion on the recycling processing charge. That's the only thing, right? So we're not voting on any of these other matters, the CPI or anything like that.
Correct. Those are already part of the contract and they can, they can just ask that and that can get moved in to annually. And that would go into effect the first of the year.
Okay. Other questions for Dawn? Okay.
I guess I will motion then to allow Republic Services to decrease the recycle processing charge to 110 per month for residential and 352 per cubic yard for multifamily commercial through December 31, 2022.
Okay, so moved by Jennifer and I, I heard Elizabeth. Yeah, I heard Elizabeth first. So Jennifer, do you want to speak to your motion?
Uh, yes. Why wouldn't we accept the decrease in this charge? That would be complete negligence by council and I appreciate Republic bringing this forward and bringing it to our attention in good faith. Thank you.
Yeah, Elizabeth, do you want to speak to your second?
I'd, no, I think Jennifer summed that up beautifully.
Okay, anybody else want to speak for or against the motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded, so I'll take the vote and I'll do it the way Jeff does, but I have the list different here. So Christina, how do you vote? Beth, how do you vote?
Hi.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, and I vote aye as well. So it's unanimous, 6-0.
Thank you.
I think we're done. Thank you, Dawn. You can.
Sean, I, I just sent a text to Jeff.
Okay, great. See you back. All right, there you go, Jeff. Turn it back over to you.
That was quick. All right, thank you all very much. I guess now we move on to new business item number seven. Consider resolution to ratify and confirm the city of Covington proclamation of public works emergency and order number 01-2021 executed by the city manager on October 12th, 2021. Mark.
Welcome back, Mayor Wagner, and thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak to council this evening. Just as an intro, I'm here to present a resolution regarding an emergency contract the city entered into to fix a leaking roof in the police department building. And Chief Roberts can get into the details more of the facts of what, of what led to this. But where this really comes down to is staff discovered a leak but could not determine what the cause was. The leak went away and then as time progressed, the leak occurred again. Water was coming in that had to be collected in a bucket. And after consulting internally, staff realized that we needed to have someone come in. We couldn't determine it on our own what was happening. Had a contractor come out who supplied a bid. And really did, after that, staff was able to make a pretty quick determination over the next couple of days, over the next week, that once the internal consultation occurred that this needed to be fixed immediately. And especially looking at the forecast and what has happened over this past week. It was a very good thing that the city moved quickly to get this done as quickly as possible. So what really happened here was we were looking at what could happen if this leak was allowed to continue and what that could potentially lead to. And there's a lot of expensive equipment that is housed in the police department building, preventing mold issues and allowing the city to make sure we're protecting our investment in that entire building. And the police department's move over there was very important. And so normally what we would do if we had an issue that was not an emergency, we'd follow the normal RCW procurement process. We would solicit bids. We would make sure to advertise things quickly and, and make sure that we had, went out through the process of securing the lowest responsive responsible bidder. Now, under the RCWs, the going through a process like this is saying there's an emergency, there's unforeseen circumstance. And if we don't take action, it could, it could result in loss of property, damage to property, loss of it, da- injury to persons or even loss of life. And so here on October twelfth, once staff and got together and discussed the bid that was provided by Northwest Roof Services, um, it, it was determined that it really needed to happen immediately. And that waiting to get more, soliciting more bids was going to potentially create more damage and would not be in the best interest of the city moving forward. So that's where, uh, the city manager executed, um, the proclamation of public works emergency or, and order. Number oh one, twenty twenty-one on October twelfth. And we're bringing this resolution now before council under the uh, RCWs as they currently stand and under the Covington Municipal Code to enter into statutorily required written findings, confirm and approve and ratify the city manager's actions. And ma- and move forward from there because we did enter into the contract uh, very quickly after the proclamation was entered and the work was done. Um, before this big storm hit, so we're that very thankful for that. And just as an aside, before I ask you to, uh, take any action or to answer any questions. What staff has identified as part of this is they're probably, we're going to return to this, um, concept of how we declare public works emergencies, because there are ways to streamline this to make sure that the process is simpler and really bringing a process procedure back to council for how, if there is an emergent public works emergency, how we can make this happen in a way that was, uh, that was even easier than how the process we went through, uh, with the city manager doing this proclamation. Because especially if there were an issue that came up that involved life safety. Um, you know, if there was human lives on the line, we would want to be able to move as quickly as possible in a way that made sense under the RCW. So we will be revisiting this, but tonight is a, is the resolution just going back to confirm the city manager's proclamation of a public works emergency. Ratify actions and enter in written findings to declare that an emergency did in fact exist. And with that, I wanted to keep this pretty brief, um, pretty straightforward situation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Joe.
So moved.
Seconded.
Is that Beth that seconded? Okay.
I know I did, but I don't know if anyone else.
No, I couldn't tell. So moved by Joe, seconded by Beth to approve the resolution to ratify and confirm the City of Covington proclamation. Public Works Emergency and Order Number zero one dash two zero two one executed by the city manager on October twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
Nope.
Beth, who's going to speak to your second?
Uh, just thanks for the, the quick action on that to get that fixed. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve this resolution to ratify and confirm the City of Covington proclamation of public works emergency and order number zero one dash two zero two one. Call for roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Hi.
Sean, how do you vote?
Hi.
Christina, how do you vote?
Hi.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Hi.
Joe, how do you vote?
Hi.
Beth, how do you vote?
Hi.
I vote I as unanimous to pass this resolution. Thank you very much. Thank you for the speedy action on it, Regan and Mark. Uh, with that, we move on to future agenda items. Does council have anything that they'd like to add to a future agenda item? Okay, seeing nobody raise their hand, we'll move into council staff comments and we'll start with Megan. Chief Roberts, welcome.
Good evening. I, uh, don't have anything this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ethan.
Uh, I'll be brief. Uh, I just want to say that, you know, with the completion of the feasibility study, that's just a major milestone. A lot of work was put into that. Um, uh, and, you know, it's a great, uh, uh, study and report that will include data and analysis. So it'll be a good basis for next step. So, um, just wanted to recognize that. And then Christina and Beth, who will be on this working group. I just wanted to let you know that, uh, Maple Valley's council meeting was, was scheduled for last night, but got, um, changed to next Monday. So once we find out who their representatives will be next week, we'll get organized and schedule our first working group meeting. So that's all I have for night, for tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan. Dawn.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Selena.
I have nothing tonight either. Thank you.
Thanks, Selena. Casey.
Uh, just looking forward to the budget workshop this weekend and don't forget your budget notebooks, please.
Thank you. Regan.
Nothing for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Regan. Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just one thing, there is an executive session tonight to review the performance of a public employee pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty one one zero sub one sub G. And just as a reminder, please, uh, st- uh, state the time that we think will be, that you'll be need to discuss that. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Krista.
For the executive session, I just resent the link to all of your emails. I will be joining the meeting just to start it and I will change, um, over to the mayor as the host, once everyone's in.
Thanks, Krista. Jared.
Uh, nothing for me. Just have a fun Halloween.
Thanks, Jared. Sean.
Yeah, I don't have anything either.
Thanks, Sean. Christina.
I just thought the, uh, disaster preparedness guide that was in our mailboxes was super timely. Our power went out for a entire five seconds. I got so excited and then it came back on. Not that I want the power to go out, but I thought it would be really fun for like, I don't know, two hours. Um, besides that, enjoy the wind, stay safe, drive safe. Take care.
Thanks, Christina. Jennifer.
Yes, I have one thing. I know it's late and I'm super tired myself. Um, hence why I'm eating. Um, so Tacoma Water, uh, through Ryan Nine asked if Covington would be willing to sign, um, in support of a letter that's being sent to our, uh, federal legislators in support of funding, um, for fish pass- fish passage um, construction at Howard Hanson Dam. Um, I believe in January Covington Water is going to come talk to us, um, just because we have full agendas with the holidays and everything. To give you guys a little more background, when I, um, did join Ryan and Covington Water met with me and explained the situation with Howard Hanson Dam and the significance of getting, um, funding to, um, improve the dam. Not just from, uh, protecting fish habitat, but, um, to preserve our access to water. It is a very big deal. It's a very high priority project. Um, and this is an opportunity to secure some funding that would go directly to the Army Corps of Engineer. Um, and, uh, it would be a, a grant from the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. So it's a unique opportunity for us to hopefully get some momentum on this project. That is a really big deal, not just for Covington, but regionally. Um, uh, so if we have council consensus, uh, Mayor Wagner can sign, um, in on support and get this to them by the end of the week.
Have a thumbs up for consensus. Okay, we have consensus. Thank you, Jennifer.
Awesome. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you. See you Saturday.
Can I, can I ask something, Jennifer? Do you have the letter you want to forward over to us or?
Yeah, with an attachment in that email, but I have it handy because I was just referencing it and I will, do you want me to port it just to you or to?
Um, if you just want us, uh, Jeff, I don't know if you want us to use, well, just, just email.
You know what, it looks like it's a draft. I think I'm supposed to let a person know that we're interested and I'll just put them in contact with you or again.
Perfect, that's great.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Thanks, Jennifer. Joe.
Um, I have two things. Uh, my first one is we, over the last two days. Logan, please stop. Over the last two days, there's been, uh, threats at Kent Lake on via social media. Uh, about possibly shooting, uh, a possible shooting at the school. I know I got an email about the one that was today at five thirty before a meeting. And I'm seeing from other parents and online, they've been asking what's going on. And I know it's a school district issue. But I know that the sheriff's department is also involved and I'd like, uh, I'd have a question for Chief Roberts is how often are there shootings that are announced on social media that actually occur? Or do we not have those statistics?
Hi, um, I don't have any statistics. I will say that, um, we do hear about students making threats on a fairly regular basis and it's relatively rare for them to follow through with their threats. Obviously with social media, there's a lot more opportunity to get their threats out there and say things. Um, you know, twenty years ago, when I was a kid, it was pulling the fire, fire alarm because that was the easy way to get attention and get everybody out of class. Um, not to say that we want to not take things seriously and absolutely we are assessing things. And I know that the SRO at Kent Lake has been heavily involved in looking into this and there's been a, a pretty substantial response on our part to, to make sure that we're ahead of it and doing everything that we can to prevent it from becoming anything violent.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that. Uh, secondly, I had Krista send out the skip pack. The skip packet from last week. Logan is knocking things over as you all just heard. Um, and I would like your comments or suggestions on the skip legislative priorities list. Um, we have tabled, took, took us a little bit to table the discussion, but we tabled the discussion until our next meeting. Um, so if you guys could take a look over the, the skip legislative priorities. If you could take a look at them and then get back to me at our next meeting, that would be.
Thanks, Joe. Beth.
Um, no, thank, uh, nothing other than have a great and safe, happy Halloween if you celebrate that or whatever holiday you celebrate for this week or next week. So.
Thanks, Beth. Um, I only have three things. One, um, just a reminder, like everyone said, we do have a in-person budget meeting this Saturday at City Hall. Um, it's been on our calendars for some time, so I'm looking forward to seeing everybody there. Uh, Saturday, this past Saturday, Make a Difference Day. It was great to see over thirty people there. Krista. Thank you for coordinating all that and, um, Ethan and Dawn, thank you for having everybody out there to help um, coordinate that with all the cleanups and, um, had a great conversation with Justin. I know Beth, you were out there in the one sixty-fourth, um, cleanup as well right afterwards. So thank you all for that. And then I have a meeting this Thursday with, um, Kent School District Superintendent or interim superintendent Israel. And I plan to bring up the communication that the school district or lack thereof, that the school district has with, um, families. So that's my top discussion item with him. Um, with that, that is all the comments I have. So we'll move into the second of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. There's anybody in the audience wishing to address council at this time? Darren. Welcome, Darren. I think you're on mute, sir. You're in two spots. Are you?
I'm trying something different.
Okay. Can you hear us now, Darren?
Yeah, Mayor, I can hear you. Hopefully you have me now.
Yep, we can hear you now.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Darren Growth, two zero four one five Southeast, two hundred fifty-eight place in Covington. Just wanted to thank you guys for upholding that emergency repair declaration, ensuring our PD is not facing the, any unwelcome working condition. So I know while it may be a contract out service, uh, these officers, they protect us. I'm happy to see that you're protecting them. Uh, with that said though, I just wanted to raise the question as to how this kind of went unnoticed. Uh, the proclamation acknowledges the twenty nineteen purchase, but then states a lack of awareness of roof maintenance. And then just claims, well, PD occupied in the spring. So I, I don't have all the details. I'm certain I don't need to know that and I appreciate especially for a budget of less than four thousand dollars that that's not necessary. But tuning in for tonight, basically, I just want to express my desire to ensure city council continues evaluation of this facility, the long-term plans. If and how this building may require any additional investments, uh, especially before the more permanent solution is in place. So just thanks again for all the efforts of city manager, public works, PD, city council to address this, get it fixed so quickly. Uh, but let's not lose sight of that big picture, uh, just one citizen expressing that concern. So thanks again for your time.
Thanks, Darren. Is there anybody else wishing to address council at this time? Carlo.
Welcome, Carl. Hello. Uh, so my name is Carla Rodriguez. I live in one seventy-seventh place Southeast in Covington. Uh, and I am a student at Catwood High School. Uh, it is my first time attending a city council meeting and it's pretty cool. Uh, seeing this, but, uh, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for helping our community and our city. Especially through this difficult time. And I want to think, uh, and I want to thank all of you for your leadership and support and commitment for Covington. And yeah.
Well, thank you for that, Carl. We really appreciate that. And thanks for attending tonight. Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Seeing nobody raise their hand, um, we will move into executive session. Where, uh, once we are done the executive session, no further business will occur. Executive session is to review the performance of a public employee pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero subset one subset G for approximately twenty minutes. And with that, good night and remember, council, you have the other, um, link to get into. Thank you. Yes.
Can you please state an exact time that you intend to come back?
Yeah, twenty minutes.
No, it's, can you actually state it's?
Oh, nine fifty.
Thank you. You can stop the recording now.
Good evening. We have just left our executive session and no further action is being taken for this evening. So this council meeting is over at nine forty-five. Thank you all very much.